Good evening, everyone. The October 2023 Brookhaven Borough Council meeting will now be called to order. Please join us in rising.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing, everyone. Madam Mayor.
Good evening. The deceased residents for the month of September 2023. Edna Satin. Diane Dougherty. Mark Furnas Senior. Catherine Orr. Daniel Mellor. George Lucas. Arthur Phillips III. And Jennifer Mater. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Wilworth, you give us a roll call. Mr. Vasquez is absent. He has a family matter.
Mr. Heller.
Present.
Mrs. Fuchs.
Here.
Mrs. Heller.
Here.
Mayor Leslie.
Present.
Uh, Ms. Swicki.
Present.
Mr. Pappas.
Here.
Mr. McKenna.
Present.
Mr. Wills.
Here.
Mr. Catania.
Here.
Mr. Wilworth. Mrs. Boyle. Chief Montella.
Here.
Chief Weiss.
Here.
Roll call complete.
Chief Weiss and Madam Mayor.
Good evening, everybody. We're going a little bit out of order tonight. Tonight, we have a special presentation to make. Often, everyone hears me praise our officers and the great job they do day in and day out. Well, tonight, we honor two of our officers for commendable acts they recently took. When you hear the circumstances surrounding this incident, I'm confident that you will feel the same as I did being at the scene that day. The important message tonight is that everyone should feel confident and proud of the job all of our officers do each day. And as I said, tonight, we recognize two of our officers for going above and beyond and for displaying an incredible sense of teamwork and being unconditionally compassionate for someone in need. They put service before self, and thankfully, this incident was successfully resolved. At this time, I'd like to ask Officer Arabi Yusef and Officer Greg Martin to please come forward. Here's a brief synopsis, very brief synopsis, of the circumstances surrounding this incident. On Saturday, September 16th, 2023, at 1:22 PM, Brookhaven Borough Police Department was dispatched to the 700 block of West Brookhaven Road in Nether Providence Township to assist them in locating a missing child. The missing child was an eight-year-old male who suffers from autism and is non-verbal. Officers Gregory Martin and Arabi Yusef responded to assist Nether Providence Township Police Department. Upon arriving in the area, Officers Martin and Yusef were briefed by Sergeant Fisher from Nether Providence Township. The officers began searching the surrounding area for the missing child. Officers Martin and Yusef began walking along the creek bed near the heavily wooded area. While searching the area, the missing child was observed in the waterline of the creek, but Officers Martin and Yusef were at distance from the child. It continued along the creek as the water level continued to rise. The water level quickly rose from waist-deep to chest-deep levels. Officer Yusef and Officer Martin, realizing that the child was in a dangerous situation, quickly formulated a plan and without hesitation were concerned for his own safety. Officer Yusef continued into the deep water while still in full police uniform, wearing his bulletproof vest. Officer Yusef was ultimately able to reach the child and keep him safe. The child clung to Officer Yusef and would not let go. Officer Yusef was able to bring the child and himself to safety near the water's edge. Officer Martin maintained constant communication with Delcom, advising their location, the circumstances, and what was needed at the scene. Officer Martin assisted Officer Yusef and the child getting out of the water and assisted in bringing them to safety through the treacherous terrain and up to the roadway where the child was ultimately evaluated by medical personnel. His life was saved by the lifesaving acts of Officer Yusef and Officer Martin. Being on scene and not only seeing this child clinging to Officer Yusef, but also seeing Officer Yusef's uniform drenched and all of his equipment soaked was a sobering reality of what these officers had just endured. Neither of them wavered for one second. They knew they had a job to do, and they did it. There is no greater sacrifice than to risk your own life to save another. The selfless act of Officer Arabi Yusef is deserving of this most prestigious award, and he has hereby presented this official commendation for heroism. Officer Martin's actions were exemplary of the finest traditions of this police department and are deserving of his official commendation.
What's up, John? Stay away from my Prius. Good job, fellas.
Good job.
Thank you.
Congratulations, guys.
Ms. Ford, we kept you waiting. Good evening, Ms. Ford.
Hard act to follow.
What have you done lately?
But, I know, that was incredible. I have to tell you that every chance I get, I brag about this community, about the community. I ask anybody that attended my back-to-school night, right, about the police department, the fire department, the borough, the community. It really is an amazing community, so well deserved, but thank you, yeah. And it's great to be back. So, Coburn has had a busy month, right? September was very busy. We had a great back-to-school. We kicked it off with our typical PBIS assembly that focuses on positive behavior, all the expected and unexpected behaviors, and along with that comes, you know, certain types of Cougar coins and pride paws and things like that, and kids can earn Eagles lunches and all that fun stuff, so it helps to keep all the kids motivated to do the right thing. So, it's a lot of fun. We had, as you all know, an amazing on September 11th, and Memorial Bike Ride was just incredible. The students lined the sidewalk in front of the school on September 11th to support the passing first responders, riding in honor, of course, of Delaware County's bravest and finest. And participation in this event is such an amazing teaching moment for our children. We did a whole school event out of it. We did a whole school read, a whole school activity. We really need our children to understand that day and what it means and certainly what this ride means to all of the participants. And I think that some of our school members and our parents can attest to all the activities that happened at school, so it was amazing. Of course, they were generally, the staff, the students, everybody is very touched by the event. And again, on the school end, it's just, like I said, an amazing opportunity for us to help our K through 5th grade students really understand, you know, what it means and what our first responders do and to certainly never forget. So, thank you for inviting us, and thank you for allowing us to be a part of that. Then, we celebrated International Dot Day, which is a day that we do a whole school read. Again, a lot of whole school activities at Coburn. We encourage students to harness their creativity, embrace challenges and confidence as they make their mark on the world. And again, it's a school-wide activity culminated in a beautiful art installation that will hang on the school walls, which is made up of student-created artistic dots which represent their mark. And again, it's a reminder to think of each day as a new chance to make it their best day yet. We celebrated Pin Wheels for Peace on September 21st, and again, that's an opportunity for our students to understand International Day of Peace and celebrate with children from around the world. Over 11 million people from around the world participate in the art project. And again, it's a visual statement. The students create pinwheels, they write messages of peace. And once again, it's a whole school activity. We have activities and lessons that go with it so that our children understand the importance of peace and unity. And the pinwheels were decorated and planted outside of the school, so if you drove past the school on September 21st, you would have seen all the pinwheels on display out there. And then, of course, we had an amazing time at Brookhaven Family Day, the students and the staff. And again, thank you for having us, and like I said, every chance I get, I brag about this community, so thank you for inviting us, and thank you for the amazing support always. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. See you next month. That opens the first public discussion session. If there's anyone that would like to speak for public discussion, please approach the podium, state your name and street for the record.
Oh, are you doing both?
Breaking tradition.
I was gonna say, are you doing both?
I'm doing both today. First of all, tonight is for Family Day. I want to thank all of the volunteers, the Family Day Committee, the other volunteers that came in, the cheerleaders, the fire police, the police, the firemen, the council members, everybody, all of our vendors. We had a great time. From everybody that I've talked to, this was probably our largest Family Day ever. We probably had well over 2,200 people or more. So, those who were there and saw what was going on, it was amazing. The vendors that have been here for a long time were excited that there are so many people here. Our new vendors love what Brookhaven does. I heard comments from two of our, from our stilt walker and another one of our vendors is doing something that they absolutely adore coming to Brookhaven, that we have the most nice, we have the nicest, most polite residents around. And these are from people who do things all over Philadelphia area. So, it's big kudos to all of Brookhaven. Thank you all. And I have a special shout-out to Lynn and Charles, Sherry and Denise for keeping me on track on where we're going, because I was losing my mind. So, thank you all very much, and that's it for Part One.
Oh, boy.
Thank you, Thomas. Is there anyone else for public discussion? That closes the first public discussion session. Chief Weiss.
Hi again.
All right, I'll try to make this quick. All right, for the month of September 2023, Brookhaven Borough Police Department initiated or assigned a total of 783 CAT assignments through Delcom. Just some of the noteworthy incidents, we had one aggravated assault, we had 11 thefts, one vehicle theft which was recovered, we had four vandalism criminal mischief. For the month, we had 10 DUIs. Breaking that down, we had seven that were controlled substances and three that were alcohol-related. We had three public drunkenness, six disorderly conduct, five narcotics investigations, 10 animal complaints, two solicitor complaints, 48 suspicious conditions, three harassment complaints, 17 disturbances or domestic disputes, three civil complaints, 60 medical assists, two mental health responses, 38 assist other departments, 19 alarms, 23 vehicle crashes, and 21 hazardous conditions or assist motorists. For the month, for arrests, we had 54 adult arrests, two juvenile arrests. The officers issued 158 citations, 11 parking violations, and 222 warnings were issued. Administratively, for the month, our police department held testing for full-time police officer. I want to thank all those that participated in our process. We have some really good candidates eligible to join our ranks. I also want to thank our Civil Service Commission for all their time and effort assisting us with this hiring process. I also want to thank Mayor Leslie and all of council for all your continued support. As many know already, Detective Wetton was sworn in last week to the FBI Task Force. It was a great ceremony, and we are very proud of Dave and all the work that he does. Regarding community, we welcome back the students at Coburn this month. It was great to see all the students and to wish them a great school year. It was equally entertaining to see all the parents' faces as they dropped off the kids to school, although we were pretty much looking at their backs because they were running away. But it was a great day to welcome them all back. We also assisted the law enforcement Memorial Bike Tour on September 11th, and Detective Wetton represented our police department by riding in that ride. We thank all those that participated. We also attended the September 11th memorial here at Borough, at the Borough Hall. We attended the grand opening of Tropical Smoothie Cafe this month, and we welcome them to our community, and we're grateful that they're here. This month, last month, I met with representatives from the Domestic Abuse Project and spoke about October being Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We appreciate their time and providing us with the purple pins to support domestic violence awareness. Obviously, we attended Family Day this month. It was a great day to engage with our community, and we appreciate all the hard work that goes into making this yearly event so special. We have, lastly, we've begun our fundraising efforts and selling our Hope for Haley t-shirts to support our 2023 No Shave November fundraising. As you can probably already tell, we have started growing our beard a little early because we have an early buy-in this year just to help us to raise money and awareness and to hopefully spark the conversation about Hope for Haley and all the while, like I said, raising awareness and financial support for our efforts. We do have t-shirts that are on sale. They're in our police station Monday through Friday, 8 to 4. You can pick them up. And lastly, training, Detective Wetton attended monthly SWAT training, and Sergeant Eastman, Officers Martin, Barth and Yusef attended range qualifications. That is it.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Montella. Just, Mr. Leslie was. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Chief.
Chief. Good evening.
Brookhaven Fire Company's monthly September 2023 fire report. Two fire incidents in the borough, 14 non-fire, 34 calls for mutual aid, four drills, total 54 for the month, 518 calls for the year. We had $3,000 loss on contents, $4,000 loss on vehicles, $200,000 of property endangered in the borough for the month. And our property endangered in the borough for the year was $1,200,000 of property endangered. Manpower, 54 calls, average 11 firefighters per call, 412 hours in service, 5,209 hours for the year, four training sessions, average of 24 firefighters, 204 hours of training log for the month, 2,618 for the year. The Fire, Brookhaven Fire Company responded to following incidents in Brookhaven Borough. We had a building fire at 133 Turnbull Boulevard. It was electrical underground fire from a house feed to a shed. We had three accidents, 352 in Brookhaven Road. We had an accident with entrapment there, mobile vehicles. We had a car on fire, a lady trapped in a car and a car on its side. Fire Company did a great job. We transported seven people to area hospitals. We had an accident at 352 in Coburn Boulevard and another one at 398 Dutton Mill Road, and we had one pedestrian struck at 352 in Cambridge Road. Assisted Upland Fire Company on two accidents, one at I-95 South at mile 5.0, and another one at I-95 South at 4.9. Assisted Chester Township on a building fire at Chalmers and Kubek on Commerce Drive. Assisted Garden City Fire Company on an accident with entrapment at Rose Valley Road and Briarwood Lane. And we assisted Parkside Fire Company on a building fire at 143 East Avon Road. And we assisted Middletown Fire Company on building fire at 106 New Middletown Road. Our monthly training was foam operations, water rescue, and engine company operations. Brookhaven Fire Company was awarded an Enbridge Community Grant last week for $5,500 for four new gas monitors. And we, Brookhaven Fire Company, attended the new county radio committee meeting for the new radio system that the county was going to have in Upper Darby. They had it up there at a venue, and we, Brookhaven Fire Company, attended the Sun Valley Homecoming Parade in Aston. And we participated in two funeral escorts involving a line-of-duty death of a park police officer who was a personal friend of our fire company, who was the chief of Edgemont Fire Company. We escorted him to the ME's office, and then we escorted him back down to the funeral home the other day. And we escorted, we assisted Philly Fire Department on escort of one of their members who was tragic loss of life from Brookhaven out to the ME's office, and we were involved in helping with the escort of one of the police department. We participated in the Borough's Family Day event, and Brookhaven Fire Company participated in two business grand openings, it's Tropical Smoothie Cafe and the Green Drop Trailer Opening, and assisted in the 9/11 bike ride with the pit stop at the fire company for all the bikers to get rehydrated. Our ambulance report for September 2023, 225 ambulance calls for the month, 139 people transported to the hospital, 80 local alarms, 145 mutual aid, 149 calls for dispatches ALS emergencies, 76 dispatches BLS emergencies, and the ambulances answered 1,936 ambulance calls so far this year.
That's it.
Thanks, Chief. Madam Mayor.
Good evening, everyone. I just have a couple things to report. Want to thank Civil Service also for issuing and collaborating the data for the test for the full-time officers. Family Day, wonderful event, Harry and Public Works and everybody involved. There's too many names to mention, but it was a great day, and that shuttle was a hit. And hopefully, next year, you know, if people are watching this, they can see it if they don't have social media and they know now to park over at Coburn, and we will shuttle you over. You don't have to have the parking headaches of going all the way down Cambridge and walking all the way back, so that was a great addition to Family Day. Again, want to congratulate Officers Yusef and Martin for their heroism. And our Veterans Day service is going to be Thursday, November 9th, at 6:30 here in the gym. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Wills.
Thank you, Mr. President, and a most good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A copy of the Solicitor's Report is on file with the Borough Secretary's Office in the event any members of the public would like to review it. I have several action items for Borough Council's consideration this evening. One is a motion to ratify a resolution approving the filing of an application with the Delco Greenways Grant Program in order to help fund the Our Lady of Charity Open Space Acquisition. As council is aware, we spoke about this project at length at the workshop meeting last week, but we had not yet filed the application until late last week. And as part of our application process, we needed to pass a resolution. And of course, time was of the essence, so we filed the particular application, and we are now requesting that council ratify that resolution. And again, I will briefly edify it for the public, and it reads as follows. Whereas Delaware County Council has established the Delco Greenways Grant Program to be utilized by the municipalities of Delaware County, and whereas the Greenways Grant can serve, enhance, connect, or planning and design grants may be used by the municipality for the improvement or acquisition of recreational land or planning services for such activities, and whereas Brookhaven Borough, Delaware County, Pennsylvania desires to participate in the Delco Greenways Grant Program in order to help fund the Our Lady of Charity Church Open Space Acquisition. So, whereas the municipality will have all available needed funding for this particular project, and therefore, the municipality of Brookhaven Borough hereby approves the filing of an application for the Delaware County Municipal Grant Program assistance. So, I will need a motion to adopt this particular resolution.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions on the motion? Not opposed. Note that everything involving the proposal and the idea, altogether, I should say, is contingent upon overwhelming public support. We agreed on 70%, I believe, so, and that means every step in the process.
And that application has been filed by our learned engineer late last week. Second action item on my agenda concerns a motion to approve the 19th partial escrow release in the amount of $22,667.48 to Franklin Brookhaven LLC for the residences of Brookhaven Glen. Again, this is our 55 and over community that is quickly, this development coming to fruition and conclusion. It is located at the intersection of Edgemont Avenue and Radio Lane, and again, the developer continues to make substantial progress toward completion. And therefore, this particular escrow release has been reviewed by the Borough Engineer. He has also recommended that we approve this escrow release. And so, if it is the pleasure of Borough Council, a motion would be in order to adopt this particular resolution, again, approving the partial escrow release in the amount of $22,667.48.
Ms. Swicki's chomping at the bit to do so.
I'm moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Third action item on my agenda concerns the recreational ordinance that had been advertised in the Delaware County Daily Times back on September 20th. It has been discussed here at the Borough Council monthly meetings, and basically, this ordinance drafts certain amendments to the policies, regulations, rules, and membership of the Borough's Recreation Committee. Now, subsequent to the advertisement of this particular ordinance, it has come to my attention that certain Borough Council members have some concerns with regard to the language in the ordinance, specifically the language with regard to the coordinating the use of the playing fields, the park and recreational facilities. Generally, this had always been the domain of Borough Council and the administration here at the Borough Hall. It is my understanding Borough Council would like to continue with that particular policy. And so, if it is the pleasure of Borough Council, we would adopt this particular ordinance, but we would delete that language that speaks about the coordination of those playing fields and recreational facilities being the domain of the Recreation Board. And again, it would refer back again to Borough Council and the administration, which apparently had been the longstanding policy here in the Borough, Brookhaven.
Sure, the management of these sports, the youth athletic fields will remain as is.
And so, if it is the pleasure of Borough Council with that minor deletion or amendment, is there a motion to adopt this order?
Certainly.
Would like it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or any questions on the motion? Motion carries.
All right. Couple of other items on my agenda concerns again, the present lease that the Borough, Brookhaven maintains with the County of Delaware, which leases the Brookhaven District Court. The Brookhaven District Court is housed in this municipal complex. We have had a longstanding lease with the County of Delaware for approximately the past 20 years. That lease expired as of July of 2023. I have been in consultation with the Solicitor's Office for the County of Delaware to begin negotiations toward continuing that lease or extending that lease, generally for an additional 10 years, which again, that's the way most commercial leases run. They tend to be more long-term. There would be an out that if the district court here had been consolidated or moved, it would give an opportunity to the county to opt out. But again, I will continue with those negotiations, and as we get closer with regard to lease terms, of course, I will be huddled with Borough Council so that we can make an informed collective decision as to how we wish to proceed. collective decision as to how we wish to proceed. Next item on my agenda concerns a conditional use application that has been filed by what we call the Doggy Daycare and Boarding LLC. This is a company that wishes to lease the facility at 3215 Edgemont Avenue.
Let me interject, that is the former Discover Chiropractic Building. Dr. Jason still owns that, he is the landlord, he moved to that fancy new building across from Pep Boys, so you know exactly where it is.
This particular building and this property is zoned C1 Commercial Zoning District, and pursuant to the zoning officer's review and his letter to the proposed lesser of this property, the C1 Commercial District does not permit as a use by right a doggy daycare or pet daycare and boarding facility at that particular location.
It's actually not called out anywhere in the borough.
Therefore, the messer has filed a conditional use application for consideration by Borough Council, but before Borough Council would consider that application pursuant to the Brookhaven Borough Code ordinances, it must be reviewed by the Borough Planning Commission. So I will be in touch with the Planning Commission Chairman, and we will schedule probably within the next 30 days, a hearing, public hearing, to review this proposed ordinance, or strike that, this proposed conditional use application, and the Planning Commission will provide written recommendations to Borough Council. Once Borough Council is in receipt of those written recommendations, it will thereafter schedule a public hearing, which will be properly advertised in the Delaware County Daily Times.
Should we motion advertise in the event that is completed between now and the November meeting?
No, that would be premature.
Okay.
We will not advertise at this time. And that will be a public meeting where all of the Borough and certainly the adjacent neighbors will have an opportunity to make their thoughts known on a proposed daycare and boarding facility for pets, and specifically, I guess, with dogs.
Are we legally obligated to contact the residents of Roberts, at least on that? Actually, you would want to do that, both sides of Roberts, horseshoes there. The thing is, with these hearings, one individual, two individuals show up at most, and it, for whatever reason, never gets to the right people, and they find out after the fact, and then they're upset. So if we could conduct some sort of polling on Roberts, I think that would benefit us and the residents. They wake up one day and they see, I don't know what they think of dogs on Roberts, but it wouldn't bother me, but if they wake up one day and see a yard full of dogs, they might be upset if they had no input on it. Are we permitted to do so?
Absolutely. All the adjacent--
We'll have John go door to door then.
All the adjacent property owners by law will be notified by the applicant by certified mail return receipt requested.
Are they generally notified by certified mail?
Yes.
Okay, I had forgotten that on here, I thought I knew everything.
It will be advertised in a newspaper of general circulation, which is generally the Delaware County Daily Times that we utilize. It will be advertised on the Borough's website, it will be advertised on the front door of the Borough Municipal Building.
All of Roberts will get it. Entire horseshoe-shaped street there, that's what you're saying? Or is it just the street?
No.
You're saying, is that just connecting properties?
Yes, all the connecting--
Well, yeah, that's, okay, yeah, I didn't think, I would want the entire run, all of Roberts.
Can the Borough send out written notice?
Yeah.
Welcome to do that.
Because the Agis and Properties, you only have one residence, if you're looking at the front door of it, at Prime Tobacco, everyone's favorite store, according to Facebook, you have one residence to the right, you have Palumbo the Dentist behind, and you have one that barely touches it, so I mean, I don't really think that's going to get a fair and accurate opinion, so we'll poll Roberts.
The Borough will continue to be open and transparent as we always are.
I threw you off, didn't I?
No.
I know I didn't try to slow you down, that's for sure.
We're getting multiple write no requests, and my office continues to work with the--
Sure, people have--
Open records officer in responding to those write no requests in a timely fashion. And I think I've spoken enough. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I will report general progress.
Mr. Katania, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President, my report's on file. Couple things I do want to mention, the Brookhaven storage, if you notice, is ready to be open or waiting for a penned out approval on the driveway, and that certificate of occupancy for the occupancy of the office and the lower level units will be issued. Each year, the MS4 program, where it's a permit we have from the federal government for the stormwater discharge, we file the required annual report at the end of the month. That is done, and I want an action item is asking for authorization to advertise bids for the Edgemont Avenue and Sanitary Sewer repairs.
What say you, council?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions on the motion? Motion carries.
Thank you, that's all I have.
I only have a few items, I'm announcing an executive session immediately following this meeting to discuss personnel matters, and I need a motion to approve the September 11, 2023 council meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions on the minutes? Need a motion carries. I need a motion to approve the September 25, 2023 workshop meeting minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions on the minutes? Just a brief update on OLC, an appraisal has been ordered and is being conducted, that should be due back within a few weeks, I believe, in October or so, and I've said it on Facebook, there's, I know there's seven Facebook threads going on all the different groups, Brookhaven1905 and all our copycats, but everything is contingent upon 70% public approval. The idea of what goes there, the whether or not we purchase the property, every single thing, I can't repeat myself enough, the council does agree. That is a question, do we have say? Do we have say? Well, yes, you do. One of the biggest complaints we had with Eaton Park to pull, one example, was when we got that grant for Eaton Park, the public, at least a few of them came to me and other members of council, and they were disappointed that they didn't really have any say. You know, Eaton Park turned out pretty good, but there was some opinion that it could have been better and it should have had public input, so the public will certainly have input. I would like to have the first public hearing, which will be advertised and held independently of a council meeting in the gymnasium in mid-November, if that is feasible. I'm also going to recommend the committee at the October workshop of two to three, or actually, two residents from each precinct, so 12 total residents, and then two to three council members to form an OLC acquisition committee, so everyone can have input. And if council is so inclined, we can begin forming that committee, we can vote to put it together or to start the committee at the November meeting, and then we can seek out two residents from each precinct in Brookhaven after that. This is going to be a long, long process, it's not going to be something that's going to be completed in weeks or months, it might go a year. The last deal that was rescinded took an entire year, from the time they approached father lines to the time they had an agreement of sale, which has been pulled, so, we're going to have to have patience with this. Other than that, I report general progress. Ms. Sawicki?
Yes, thank you. Tonight, I did deliver to Rob Montella the 2023 Volunteer Fire Relief Association State Aid and a check for $57,390.33. I just wanted council to be made aware of that. I also have the bill list for October. The total is $92,458.90. Trash is $675 of that, sewer fund is $3,417.13 of that total, road fund is $385, and the general fund is $87,981.77. So I'm going to make a motion that we do approve the bill list tonight.
Before you continue, do we have a second?
Second.
I have to abstain as I'm, well, I'm going to vote yes on the bill list, but I have to abstain from any billing from Katania Engineering, as I'm now an employee of Mr. Katania.
Okay.
So sell your Katania stock while you can. And Mrs. Heller, being that she's fortunate enough to be my spouse, has to vote the same You have to, you have to say the same thing I said.
What do I have to say? I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention. Just like I'm--
You have to abstain from the Katania Engineering--
I'll be abstaining from the Katania's.
But approve everything else.
But approve everything else.
No, you do not need a roll call, because we're not abstaining from the entire vote.
Okay.
Are there any, any names? Any questions on the bill list? Motion carries.
Okay, I do have, I'm hoping by the October workshop, we will have the 2024 General Fund draft of that budget to present to council so they can review it, and for November's council meeting, I'm hoping to have the road funds, sewer fund, and trash drafts to council so that we can really in November have a full discussion at maybe a couple meetings, we may have to have a couple meetings for council and the public to go through it, but we'll have--
We do that within a couple weeks, I guess?
Well, November's in like four weeks, so, yeah.
Yeah, well, hoping by the next, by the workshop to have the dates--
Oh, okay, all right.
So that's all I have, thank you.
Mrs. Fuchs?
Thank you. The ordinance committee will meet on Wednesday this month, October 18th, at 6:30 PM here in Borough Hall. I have a little spiel about Family Day, too. I'd like to thank Tom Dykes and the Family Day Committee, Public Works, and the Fire and Police Departments for another spectacular Family Day. Not only was additional planning needed, but everyone had to pull double duty throughout the day. It appeared to be one of the most attended Family Days, and residents really noticed this time around the variety of attractions, as we are always trying to add fun things, such as bringing back the dunk tank, thank you Charles Leslie for being a good sport, having rags to riches animal rescue, thank you Charles Allen for that, and a shuttle to safely take residents back and forth, thank you Bill Kraft--
That's a great idea.
--to and from Coburn Elementary School parking lot, so that residents didn't have to park 10 streets away and walk to Family Day. It took quite a bit of planning and lots of hard work, but it was so worth it in the end. Family Day wrap-up meeting will be on Tuesday, October 10th, correct? 7:00 PM. Sunday, October 15th, is our 19th Annual Golf Outing at Ed Oliver's Golf Course, beginning at noon. This is a very fun day, with all proceeds going to our Recreation Board--
Other spots left?
I believe so, yeah. Forums are available on our website and in the office. Sunday, October 22nd, from 9:00 to 3:00, is our Fall Indoor Flea Market. The flyer and forum are on the website and available in the office. Monster Mash is on Friday night, October 27th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM for 5th and 6th graders from Pendelco, Christian Academy, and Holy Family. The cost is $10 per student and includes a slice of pizza and two drinks, no costume masks, please. Proceeds benefit Brookhaven Holiday Parade and the Recreation Board, and volunteers are always welcomed. Trunk or Treat for Brookhaven Borough residents age 12 and under will be held on Saturday, October 28th, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. All information is posted on our website, and the flyers are available at Borough Hall. There is also a trunk or treat Facebook page named trunkortreat Brookhaven/PA19015. Signups will be every Wednesday now through October 25th, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM, and both trick-or-treaters and those with trunks need to sign up. Anyone who would like to donate candy, please call or text the trunk or treat hotline at 610-716-8332 between 9:00 AM and 9:00 PM. Drop off, we have a drop-off barrel in the vestibule for anyone who wants to drop off some candy. And we also have, you can leave a message on the trunk or treat hotline as well. Rain date is Sunday, October 29th, and the next trunk or treat meeting will be held October 10th, Charles?
Yeah.
October 10th at 6:00 PM.
Yep.
Okay. The next rec board meeting will be on Thursday, October 26th. The shredding electronics recycling event is on Saturday, November 4th, at Coburn Elementary School's parking lot, for electronics, anything with a cord is accepted. I just wanted to put this out there, because we just got a message not long ago, but anyone who would like four more COVID test kits, you can obtain them through the US government by going to their website, which is www.covid.gov/test. Fill in the required information, and they'll be sent to you. If you have any old tests, please check the expiration date. I just threw out seven boxes of COVID tests last night, all expired, so please check your dates. And lastly, I've made recycling flyers that I will share moving forward. I made them for Family Day for my table, but it was a lot of good information, so I want to make sure the residents, if they didn't pick them up from the table, can get them. So they'll be in the back of the room, and they'll be in the office, and they'll be on the website and our Facebook page. That's all my report.
And let me add that I received a text earlier from the giant, what is his title? He's the giant pharmaceutical district manager. We have a flu clinic tomorrow, 3:00 to 7:00 here in the, is that in the community room here?
Yep, community room.
Not the gym, community room, in the community room. They have zero appointments, wanted me to confirm that it was shared with the public, all it was now, so.
I'll put that on the website and the Facebook page.
Thank you. I did not get a flyer for it, like I usually do an email, otherwise I would have put it on Facebook, so, it's walk-in, yeah. Well, you can make an appointment or walk in.
Okay.
Yeah, Mrs. Heller.
Okay. So I want to congratulate Dave Wetton for being sworn in for the FBI Task Force. It was a very nice ceremony, a little bit long, but it was very nice, very educational and historical, but a lot of very interesting stuff about alcohol, so--
$17,000.
Yes, $17,000, $17,000, yep. I also want to congratulate Officer Youssef and Officer Martin for, again, making us proud, and again, for risking their lives for that young boy. Family Day, I cannot thank Tom and Charles enough for their leadership from, I guess it was the beginning of last year, and behind every true leader is, you know, the person that puts everything together, and that would be Lynn, because she keeps everyone on point, so organized. I want to be just like her when I ever grow up, because she is so super organized and keeps us in mind, thank God for her. But on behalf of a special thanks from Harry to Public Works and to Hector for all of their help that they did the morning of, as well as John, because, again, we have everyone, it's all hands on deck, and we cannot have this event without all of our volunteers. So we've already started thinking about next year, because that's what we do, and those meetings start from February on, every month, and then it's every two weeks. So again, I want to thank all of our volunteers, again, you know, Fire Marshal Leslie, he was there in that dunk tank for almost three and a half hours--
In full uniform.
And as full uniform, a complete trooper, boots and all, complete trooper. So we do greatly appreciate all of our volunteers, because we cannot do it without all of our volunteers. As the mayor and as Mrs. Fuchs said, the shuttle was a huge success. I think there was 60 families that actually utilized it, which was great and truly needed. So thank you, everyone who helped and did all of that. Our next parade committee is going to be on Wednesday, the October 11th, at 7:30. We have a tech meeting on the 12th, we're going to be concentrating on the format of our newsletter, because we've been talking about a newsletter, and we're going to actually get it out onto the website for everyone to read up on. The field light project is coming along slowly, but it's coming along. The fourth hole was drug today at Memorial Field, and they'll be pouring the concrete this week. We have all the light fixtures are in, we are just waiting on the poles, which should hopefully be within the next two weeks. We have the Sunday Fun Run for the Fire Department, so it's a 5K, it's going to be sponsored by the Faith Community Church on the 29th of October, which is a Sunday, so please come out. It's a load of fun, hopefully the weather will be a little bit more cooperative than it was last year, but we still had a great time. We also have the Fire Department's Designer Bag Bingo, which is going to be held Friday, November 3rd, at 6 o'clock, so please sign up. Again, all the benefits are wonderful Fire Department. We also have Fire Prevention Month, it's key, just some of my little tips that I have, and I'm sure that the Fire Marshal will have much more. So some of the tips are, for the Fire Prevention Month is to make sure that we install and check our smoke alarms, make a plan for escape, cook carefully, also be careful with space heaters, make sure you have three feet away from anything that can burn, please make sure you don't leave them on, keep them away from children and pets, and don't leave them on when you go to bed and when you leave the house. Also, make sure that, you know, apparently careless smoking is the leading cause of fire deaths in North America, so please never smoke in bed or when drowsy. so please never smoke in bed or when drowsy. Also, make sure that you keep hallways and doorways and pathways clear, and don't park in the fire lanes, and don't park in front of fire hydrants. One of the things that I can say from my experience, the Fire Department was gracious enough to allow me to attend a training in February, when they utilized the old TD Bank, and they did a rescue, and it was with a smoke machine. And when I tell you that they can see in front of them, they cannot see in front of them. So please make sure, when you get home, make sure that you look at, you know, the entries ways, you know, because if it's in their way, they're going to trip over it, and it's not going to be easy for them to get to you. So make sure that you have also a plan in place. The whole funds drop and roll. Get up and get out and stay out. Is that good? Okay, thanks. Thank you. So I do have some motions to make. My first motion is to waive the permit fee for the Brookhaven Parade that's held on Saturday, November 18th, 2023. This is a motion that we waive every year, because obviously, it benefits all of our residents. So I'm making that motion to waive that.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the third, the second motion that I'm going to make is also to waive the permit fee. Brookhaven Baseball is having a movie night in the park, which is at Memorial. It's going to be held on Friday, October 13th, 2023, and it's free for anyone that would like to go and see it. And I believe it's going to be the Mario movie. So again, because it benefits our residents on our park, and it's free, I would like to waive that permit fee for them.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, I'd imagine? Motion carries.
My next motion is to approve utilizing Bancorp Fleet Leasing Specialists for leasing four new police vehicles.
Is there a second? Any reminder, we did have the gentleman from Bancorp present at the workshop last week.
Seconded.
And we all agree that it is a money-saving plan. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion carries.
And my last motion is to approve the Brookhaven Fire Department ambulance shed at the walking trail, although I was asked to have this, what's the word that I'm looking for?
Tabled.
Tabled until Hector is here.
Well, and so council can discuss it with Janice President. I'm going to motion to table the motion.
That's going to be discussed at the executive session after tonight's meeting.
Do I have a second on the motion to table the motion?
I'll second.
All in favor of tabling?
That's going to be discussed at the executive session tonight.
All in favor of tabling? Yes, it will be discussed at the executive session. All in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye.
That's the end of my report.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Heller. Mr. Pappas, sir.
Workplace public safety meeting was held. There was no injuries, no accidents to the borough vehicles. Altogether, no incidents involving any type of insurance claims. The Historical Committee is processing, continues to process Hometown Banner Program, honoring Brookhaven soldiers that were killed in action. We're also looking for volunteers on the Historical Committee. Donna, if you could put that on the website, it would help us out a little bit.
I can throw it up on social media also.
Okay. There really is no requirements. It's just putting some time in. And I have two motions here. The first motion is to approve the Civil Service Police Eligibility List for the two open full-time police positions.
We should note that these are replacements, not additions to the full-time staff. Who wants the second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or any questions? Motion carries.
And the second motion is to extend conditional employment offers to two candidates to fill the two open full-time police positions.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
That will be the second, George takes the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or any questions on the motion? Motion carries.
That concludes business.
Thank you, Mr. Pappas. Mr. Vasquez is absent. Mr. McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. For the Hometown Hero Program, George just touched on it, the Killed in Action banners. The first round of Killed in Action banners has been received. We have them currently stored, and they will be scheduled for installation. We wanted to coordinate with, I believe, Mr. Coleman and whatnot to make sure that the families don't want pictures with the banners before we put them up.
They're going to be unveiled at the Veterans Day ceremony.
And, I'm sorry, they're also unveiled, yes. That's all I have really for Hometown Heroes for this month. The Butterfly Garden, the Public Works Department did service the grounds in September, removing, partially removing weeds, installing new mulch in the beds. And both myself, one of the Butterfly Sanctuary Committee members, Lisa Palermo, Natalie from the office, and we were talking, we have all gone up there at different times looking at ways to improve the grounds. I believe Janice is calling a meeting next week, and we will put that out there when that's going to happen, and we can hopefully finalize some plans to beautify the grounds further and hopefully attract more butterflies to those grounds. I have a report on the Butterfly Sanctuary Monarch Butterfly Propagation. As of 10/23, 71 monarch butterflies have been released into the sanctuary. These butterflies were harvested from the sanctuary as caterpillars, cared for by Committee Woman Lisa Palermo, and have been released daily. Caterpillars are still being harvested, although in far fewer numbers. In 20 years, monarch butterflies have declined 90%. They were numbered in the millions, and they're now down to a number approximately 335,000. The committee has been reached out to by educational institutions regarding our success in this venture, and we have been invited to speak to a horticulture class at a school district in New Jersey. Committee member Kevin Haney, myself, and Ms. Palermo will be speaking to that class in November, and hopefully inspiring people to take steps to increase the population of the monarchs. And just by the end of this season, we are predicting close to 300 that will be released into the sanctuary for the fall migration to Florida. Of those 300, again, it's just a random guess of a number, but if 150 were female, you could have the possibility of over 75,000 offspring, thanks to, you know, the committee that worked so hard on the grounds and to Mrs. Palermo, who raises these butterflies, you know, from the time they're a caterpillar until they emerge from crestles. She has done a phenomenal, phenomenal job with that, and I thank you, Lisa. And that's all I had to report, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Polo?
Hi. Good evening, Chris. Good month of September. With regards to codes, I had 20 code issues, resulted in two citations, 11 letters. Honestly, I stopped keeping track of all the personal contacts, because I don't have time. One of the things I did last month, I removed over 40 advertisement signs from our polls, properties they shouldn't be at, because I hate them. Sorry.
Thank you for that.
And it's illegal. With regards to building, we had 53 permits applied for, 32 permits issued. We had six contract relations applied for, five issued. 17 UNO inspections, six right-to-know requests. The one thing I will say that you're going to see a lot of work starting to happen at the Brookhaven Shopping Center, there's four separate projects that are, one already kicked off, the other three are about to kick off. I've been in contact with the owner several times this month, to the point where he's calling me, and we're going to try to get that shopping center looking nice.
Good.
So, and that's all I have.
Brookhaven would certainly appreciate that. Thank you. Mr. Leslie, sir.
You all dried off? You all dried off?
I am.
Good.
I had all intentions over at my speedo, but that is a act of waste with my summer. Oh, my.
Not an image, I mean.
Thank you for that.
There's always next year.
There's always next year. Again, Mrs. Heller said.
Shower now. It is Fire Prevention Month. The Fire Company does have the schools and daycare dates all set up. They will be out there visiting. So if you have any of this stuff in your house, get it out, especially if it's attached garage, clean out. It's Fire Prevention Month. Get everything out that you haven't touched in the last three years, all the junk. No flammable liquids in the garage, no propane in the attached garage. Out there in Plum Borough in Western Pennsylvania, it's still under investigation. With an attached garage, they're not sure if it's going to be propane that leaked or gasoline where those six people were killed. So get it out of your attached garage. Hoarding conditions, clean up. Get your places cleaned up. Again, they mentioned the Pet Boys Demo over there, where the Ross is going to be going in. Park cleaners is still going strong over there. They're demoing after the adult daycare at Elwin. Pup eyes is getting close. The TCO at 121 East Brookhaven Road, still waiting on the grid acceptance test. I believe the permits were just ordered. We had an issue at 133 Trimble Boulevard, electrical issue. So if we're out there, we call for PICO, and they come and pull the meter, I will not authorize the meter to go back on unless our electrical inspector goes and says, hey, everything's good, and then we'll get ahold of PICO to get your meter put back on. 5,000 and 3 Edge Mountain Avenue, Aspen Dell is getting close. And Mrs. Heller mentioned about smoking in bed. I meant, I missed this last month. Over on Alcott, the House Fire, they were smoking in bed. And I was like this, it was a delete 911 call again. After interview, the guy extensively, and then they told a tale to the police, to their guys, and we finally got the truth out of them. They were smoking in bed. So it's 2023 people. Show me no smoking in bed. And then Harbin Way is still under progress over there. Any questions, comments, bitches, complaints?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Have a good night. Thank you. Anyone else at the side table? Counsel? Oh, wait, we have a public discussion. What am I doing? It opens the second public discussion session. If there's anyone not named Tom Dykes that would like to speak for a public discussion, please push to my. Quickly, Mrs. Fuchs, once again, have him watch The Golden Bachelor.
It's nice.
I've been saving that for weeks.
I just want to say, there's somebody from Aston that's wanting, that's why I want to watch it.
If you were at the Family Day, there were a couple large signs of this. This is the remaining activities for the Rec Board this year. There are 11 more activities going on. So look forward to it. So besides everything Donna said, there's also two artful aging coming up, one in November, one in December. Murder Mystery Dinner coming up. It's the slaying at the Speakeasy. Lots of fun. Good group.
What's the date on that, Tom?
The date on that is Friday, November 10th.
Mayor heard Speakeasy and jumped right on.
Right into it, yes.
When you're full of couples tonight.
They are a lot, they are a lot of fun. The Holiday Parade. We also are having our second flower arranging class this year. So it'll be more of a winter-type one. Then the big one is December 3rd for the senior luncheon, as well as the tree lighting service. And December 10th was the other artful aging one. So please, 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 check this out. There are posters, it's on the website, it's on Facebook pages. There's Plexiglas holders in the lobby, just outside the foyer. We have all the signs there, so you can pick them up, get them out to people, do that. We're trying to get as many residents involved in as much as possible. I'm doing that. If anyone wishes to join us for Family Day, for the Recreation Board, whatever, we're looking for as many volunteers as possible. So please come on out and come join us and join the fun. So, and that's all that I have.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you for everything.
But one big, one big call to Charles. Thank you for your three hours in the wet tank. We appreciate that.
I like your location, though.
You want to keep him in one spot.
I did hear a rumor that he said that he was warmer in the tank than he was when he got, before he got hit.
He was.
He probably was.
Oh, boy.
The clean water.
Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else for public discussion? Going once, going twice? The second public discussion session is closed. Anyone else from the side table? No additional comments?
I do.
I have a comment, Tim.
Oh, you always do.
Go ahead. Now, who's talking to me?
No, I thought you was talking to me.
I was talking.
Talking to both of you.
I think so, but that's okay, I don't care. Go ahead.
So I have a correction of the ordinance committee. We are meeting on Tuesday, October 17th, at 6:30, not Wednesday. And the ordinance committee is also looking for volunteers. If you know anybody that wants to be involved with ordinances, please send them my way.
Mrs. Heller?
So I forgot to mention that the multipurpose facility, we should have the final design for the workshop, so that we can get approval for the November meeting. We're going to have one last meeting with the multipurpose facility committee before we have, bring that to the council workshop. The other thing I have is that I always have to end it with, we have three birthdays that are going to happen between now and the workshop. One is to Councilwoman Sawicki, that's going to be celebrating her birthday very, very soon. We also have.
Happy birthday, Janice.
We also have our crossing guard, Tim Cohen, who will be celebrating her birthday very, very soon, and possibly on the same day as Mrs. Sawicki. And we also have Officer Greg Martin, who will be celebrating his birthday before our next council meeting, or council workshop, I should say. So happy birthday, Janice.
Thank you.
Hope you have the best one ever.
And I have one thing to add, since it leaked out on the Facebook. I can't name the company, but there is a local, I guess you'd call it a sports bar,